Good afternoon. Today is September 10th. Welcome to this morning's City Commission meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Would those that are able, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time of the meeting that we have a citizens' forum available. This citizens' forum is for anybody that's here to raise a concern or a comment on anything that's not on today's agenda. So if you're here and would like to address the commission with something, again, that's not on today's agenda, please feel free to come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll move into awards and proclamation.
Item 4.1, Amendment of September 2012 as National Recovery Month in the city of Salina. Dawn Green, Senior Recovery Coach with Central Kansas Foundation, will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the city of Salina proclaiming September is National Recovery Month. Prevention works, treatment is effective, people recover. Whereas behavioral health is a central part of one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental illness or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and community at large, and whereas people in recovery achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and contribute in positive ways to their communities, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services in. Whereas in 2010, 2.6 million people received special treatment for a substance use disorder. More than 31.3 million adults aged 18 or over receive services for mental health problems, according to the 2010 National Survey on Drug Use and Mental Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach millions more who need help, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery in the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office on National Drug Control Policy, and the Central Kansas Foundation Pathfinder Recovery Center invite all residents of Salina to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, Norman Jennings, by virtue of authority vested in me by the laws of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2012 as National Recovery Month. In the city of Salina, I call upon the people in the city of Salina to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's theme: Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover.
Excellent. Mr. Green, do you have any activities or things that you would like to make people aware of at this time?
Well, we had a beautiful recovery fair, September 8th, at the Pathfinder Recovery Center, or at 1809 South Ohio. Eleven local recovery organizations off in the city of Salina shared their messages with over 250 people during the day, from 10 o'clock to 5:00 in the afternoon. And coming up, in celebration of CKF's 45th anniversary and National Alcohol Drug Addiction Recovery Month, we're having a comedian, recovery comedian Mark Lundholm. He's coming to the Masonic Center on September 21st, 2012, from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. And I must say, tickets went fast for this. It's going to be a big deal. We're really quite excited. Recovery Month has really kicked off in a very powerful fashion here in Slough County.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. I have a signed copy of the proclamation, if you'd like to come forward and get it.
Item 4.2, Resolution Number 12-6933, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Robert D. Campbell for his employment with the city of Salina from August 16, 1984, to September Need a motion to approve your resolution?
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 12-6933?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 12-6933, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Robert D. Campbell for his employment with the city of Salina from August 16, 1984, to September 14, 2012. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is your moment for a nice long speech, if you would like to give one. Thank you.
I just like to express my appreciation for the city of Salina to let me serve the finest police department of the state of Kansas.
Move in.
Item 4.3, the month of September 2012, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Pam and Stephanie Stidham will read the proclamation.
Proclamation for National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas childhood cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in the United States, killing more children between the ages of 1 and 20 than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, and AIDS combined. It is the second-leading cause of death during childhood, exceeding only by accidents. And whereas on any given school day, approximately 46 children and adolescents or two classrooms of students are diagnosed with cancer. And whereas every year, more than 12,500 children are diagnosed with cancer. And whereas average treatment for childhood cancer diagnosis is two years and can cause serious side effects that may last a lifetime. And whereas one in every 330 persons in the United States will develop cancer before his or her 20th birthday. And whereas every year, over 2,500 children under the age of 20 lose their lives to cancer. That is equivalent to seven children every single day. And whereas when a child is diagnosed with cancer, the entire family is forever affected. Therefore, in recognition of support of the patients, families, and professionals leading the fight against childhood cancer, I, Norman M. Jennings, mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 2012 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Salina and recognize the gold ribbon as a symbol of childhood cancer. I encourage all citizens to honor those young people who have lost their lives to this devastating disease and join the fight against childhood cancer in Salina. And witness whereof, I have hair in two, set my hand, and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 10th day of September 2012.
Thank you. Do you have any activities or anything that you would like to make us aware of at this time?
I'm Heidi Fire, I'm with the Love Cloy Foundation, and on Saturday, September 15th, we've got our fifth annual kickball tournament. This is going to be our biggest tournament we have had yet. We've got 18 teams and about 260 players joining that event. That event starts at 8:00 a.m. and goes to about 7:00 o'clock, and it is at the East Crawford Playing Fields. On Tuesday, September 18th, we'll have a dine-out night at Tucson's. We've done that with them for the last four years. That's from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. on that Tuesday. On Friday, September 21st, we'll be at Long MacArthur. They have a PRS VIP event. We'll be selling barbecue, our shirts, and our monkeys to raise money. And then on Sunday, September 23rd, the Love Cloy Foundation is hosting a childhood cancer family gathering. This is the first one. And so we're going to be able to get all the families affected by childhood cancer together at Jerry Ivy Park for kind of a celebration of life and to remember those that we've lost.
That's a lot of neat stuff going on. Okay, so the shirts can be got out at Long MacArthur?
Well, in any event that we're at, either kickball or at Tucson's, and we also sell an awareness monkey as well.
Okay, and the only date I didn't get was the Tucson's night, wasn't that it?
That is September 18th.
September 18th. Excellent. I have a signed copy of the proclamation here, if you'd like to come forward and get it.
Need shirts.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Today, we have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so that moves us into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 27, 2012. Item 6.2, award of home investment partnership grant fund for the rehabilitation of four homes to Kansas Sand in the amount of $138,350, and approve the award of two homes to upon construction in the amount of $64,228, including the use of $137,078 of home grant funds, $11,900 in weatherization funds, and $64,922 of city revolving loan funds.
Does the commission have any questions or wish to remove either one of these items? Seeing none, I can entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is read. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Move on to development business.
Item 7.1, First Reading Ordinance Number 12-10,657, annexing a portion of West Magnolia Road right-of-way west of Virginia Drive that abuts the Premier Edition and its acceptance of related right-of-way dedication.
Mayor, I have a conflict on this, and I need to recuse myself from participating.
So moved. Thank you. Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item before you has two action items, one of which is an acceptance of an offer due to dedication or right-of-way dedication for the north half of Magnolia Road. The follow-up action to that would be to consider annexation of that portion of roadway. And to get your bearings, I'll direct you to the map on the screen. And this shaded area that you see there is an area that is presently not within the city limits of the city of Salina and is proposed for annexation in this item. If we go back to 1997, that is when the interchange at Magnolia Road and I-135 was designed and construction began. And as part of that, right-of-way was acquired, and that right-of-way ended right where that red line is. And that is what the city annexed so that the entire interchange would be within the city limits of the city of Salina. And in 2010, you reviewed a plat of the Premier Edition located right here, which contained 4.37 acres. At that time, staff recommended and the city commission did not annex any of the dedicated right-of-way for the south half of Magnolia Road because we lacked right-of-way on the north half, and it had been the city's policy not to annex half streets to the center line so that we maintained consistent jurisdiction for street segments. The prospective developers of the Premier Edition have now asked the city commission to initiate the annexation of this portion right here. It's my understanding that they were unable to obtain approval from the Slough County or the Slough County engineer for construction of a driveway in the location that the city commission approved through the vacation of restricted access. So there is existing right-of-way for the south half. There is a 50-foot wide strip up here where the Magnolia Road ditch is that is already owned by the city of Salina. So there's an intervening 24.75-foot wide strip that was part of a county road record action. And we have identified Annabelle Marie Nordbo and Michael C. Nordbo as the successors to the underlying ownership of that, and they have agreed to transition that from the road right-of-way, or the road record action, to actual right-of-way. That would give the city full ownership and control. So if this annexation occurs, the new, if you could go back to the other map, Dustin, the new west boundary of the city will be right in that location. And I wanted to point out, this little notch right here, this is what is annexed as far as the Premier Properties. There was an action in the district court that was a adverse possession and quiet title action between Comco and Premier Properties, and the court awarded this property right here to ownership of Mr. Hills. However, that did not extend to this piece right here. So the only part that Mr. Hills controlled to dedicate was right here, and so we still would have a notch of that frontage that is not annexed. But the effect of this would be to establish a new west boundary line. The city would have complete jurisdiction there for project oversight, driveway access control, traffic control, and also law enforcement. So we would be striping, we would be setting speed limits, we would be plowing snow, and we'd be controlling driveway access. So with the signing of the deed of dedication, the city have ownership and control of this area, so you have jurisdiction to annex it. The financial impact to the city would be about a tenth of a mile of additional roadway that we would be responsible for. And so the correct order of action here would be to accept by motion the right-of-way dedication from Annabelle Marie and Michael C. Nordbo. And upon that acceptance, you could approve the annexation ordinance. The applicant has requested that in order to facilitate closing on the sale of the property, that first and second reading occur today at the same day. And it's my understanding that no longer requires declaration of emergency, but I'll defer to Mr. Bankston on how you could do first and second reading today, if that's your desire. With that, I would be open to any questions. I know Mr. Mays is here representing the developers.
Okay. Mr. Bankston, so we need basically a motion for the right-of-way acceptance, and then we would need a motion for the first reading of the ordinance, and then what's the matter of the second reading?
The matter of the second reading would be a motion determining that there would be a compelling public purpose served by hearing the matter on the same day for second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions of staff on this issue?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to comment at this time on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Greg, do we need to include the names, or do we just need to say we accept the right-of-way as?
As dedicated.
As dedicated via the Nordbos?
It'll be fine.
I'll move that we accept that dedication from the Nordbos?
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the right-of-way dedication by the Nordbos. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. We have accepted the right-of-way dedication, four zero.
And I would move that we accept ordinance number 12-10657, annexing the portion of Magnolia Road right-of-way west of Virginia Drive that abuts the Premier Edition and the acceptance of the related right-of-way dedications.
Second.
And a motion and a second to accept on first reading, ordinance number 12-10657. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And then this would be the point in time for a compelling reason to exist for a second reading to occur on today.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. I think certainly is. It's noted there on the blue sheet, as Mr. Andrew indicated. I think it is for the purpose of facilitating closing of the sale and development of the property. I think it's up to you as to whether you wish to exercise that discretion, but it would seem that that would be illegitimate basis.
Sure.
That was your choice.
Okay. Would you have any?
I move we approve on second reading the annexation of West Magnolia Road right-of-way of Virginia Drive that abuts the Premier Edition and acceptance of related right-of-way dedications. Ordinance number 12-10657.
Do we need to include language? Yeah.
Well, I think we probably do need to, as a separate action, consider the motion if one wishes to make that, that the compelling public purpose exists to hear it on second reading.
Yeah.
If that prevails, then it would be appropriate to move to the roll call for second reading.
Should we do a roll call?
No, I'll tackle it. Basically, I move that there is a compelling public interest in having a second reading on the ordinance 12-10657 today.
Second.
Another motion and a second acknowledging that a compelling public reason exists in order to pursue this issue on second reading today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries four zero.
So then I'll move to approve on second reading ordinance number 12-10657, annexing the portion of West Magnolia Road right-of-way west of Virginia Drive that abuts the Premier Edition and acceptance of related right-of-way dedications on second reading.
Second.
For motion and a second to approve ordinance number 12-10657 on second reading, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Motion carries four zero. We now move into administration business.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 12-10,654, amending sections 42-303 and 42-306 of the Salina Code pertaining to conditional uses and use limitations in the C4 District.
So ordinance number 12-10654 passed on first reading on August 27th. Since that time, new amendments have been received. At the request of the city commission, staff is adding language to section 42-306B, which clarifies the definition of merchandise display for the purpose of outdoor display exceptions. At this point in time, are there any questions of staff? Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment? Or Mr. Andrew?
I just wanted to point out to you, if you're searching for that, it's on page two of your ordinance, and it's in 42-306-2B. And the language that staff came up with was that merchandise shall mean finished products removed from all packaging and boxes assembled and ready for use by consumers. So if that language is acceptable, then that will be incorporated into the ordinance. If you still think it needs some work, I wanted to call your attention to what staff came up with.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions? Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move that we accept on second ordinance, our second reading ordinance number 12-10654, amending chapter 42, article 6, division 14, section 42, 303, and 42, 306, pertaining to conditional uses and use limitations in the C4 District.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 12-10654. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Item 8.2, first reading ordinance number 12-10,658, amending section 8-254 of the Salina Code by removing testing requirements for VOC air testing and placing specific requirements on mercury testing on certain drug sites.
Mr. Lund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, I will bring forth to you today a small amendment to an existing ordinance that was passed in 2010. Reason methamphetamine lab is discovered in Salina brought to our attention that there are two testing agents or two testing cycles that we probably do not need to have in our existing ordinance, or that we need to have under limited conditions. The first one is the VOCs of all organic compounds are tested in the I70 drug task force, or the chemical remediation company who's in charge of remediating the lab has tests, when they come in, they do their own tests, and really will not need to have any further tests considered in the program. Once they have completed the test for VOCs, then they know the level of the facility and can aerate the building or can take care of the contaminants during their cleaning process. And so therefore, we can feel like we can eliminate the testing for the final results of the VOC compounds. The second one is the mercury testing, and we found out recently with certain studies, the city attorney's office has helped us with this process, that mercury is only tested when there is a P2P type test, or a FETAL-2 propane type system used for making methamphetamine. So we asked that we reduce the mercury testing to only those sites that have P2P testing results, and that will be discovered by the cleaning or the toxic chemical remediation company that will be hired. At that point, they would let the city staff know that they would need to do a complete testing for the P2P as well. At that point, then, the testing would take place with a final report. The last house we had, or last facility we had, indicated that those two tests were not needed. We had a very swift and smooth company out of Colorado that came in and did a very good job with remediation of a lab, actually, there was three labs in the same building, but they did a great job of removing this and brought to our attention that we probably do not need these types of tests any longer. These tests are somewhat expensive for the owners, and we're trying to help the owners out here today by being able to pass amendment to the ordinance by eliminating the VOC tests as well as limiting the mercury testing to only certain type of labs. I would stand for any questions if you have.
Any questions of staff? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this issue today? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move the commission approve ordinance 12-10658 as proposed, amending section 8-254 of the Salina Code.
Second.
For motion and a second to approve ordinance number 12-10658 on first reading. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Item 8.3, consideration of ordinance number 12-10,655 repealing ordinance number 12-10,639, which amended chapter 13 of the Salina Code by adding sexual orientation and gender identity to classes protected by discrimination, or consideration of ordinance number 12-10,656, calling a special election submitted to the vote of the electors of the city of Salina in accordance with the initiative and referendum statute, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 12-10,639, which amended chapter 13 of the Salina Code by adding sexual orientation and gender identity to classes protected by discrimination.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The matter before you possibly warrants some clarification in terms of when you took your initial action in adopting the amendments to chapter 13. At that time, had you even been so inclined, Kansas law would not have allowed you to submit that question to referendum. In order to do so, there must either be statutory authorization, or even in the case of an advisory election, we know that as a matter of Kansas law, you are not allowed to simply put something on the ballot because you would like to do so. We now see the initiation of the process under the Kansas Initiative and Referendum statute. That is the means by which a matter can potentially advance to referendum, depending upon the action that you take today. As you know, a petition was submitted. That petition advanced the proposed ordinance that would simply repeal your prior action. That leaves you today with two options: either to take that action yourself as a governing body in adopting the ordinance that has been advanced by the petition, that would, much like any other ordinance, simply take a majority vote of all of you, three votes, in order to repeal the prior action by adopting the ordinance that has been put forth in the petition. If you would choose not to, well, I'm sorry, I should make the point that obviously whether you you take that action or not is a matter of your discretion as the governing body. If you would choose not to take that action, then state law mandates that you place that matter before the electors by calling a special election. And as you know, the timing of the situation is such that that special election can be called as a matter of, it is still a special election, but it would be in conjunction with the upcoming general election on November 6th. At least that is certainly your prerogative, and fortunately, the county election officer, Don Merriman, and his staff, as always, have been very helpful in terms of working out the logistics that would enable that election to occur in conjunction with the general election at no additional cost to the taxpayers. So as I say, the, this first step is whether the governing body wishes to enact the ordinance that repeals, would repeal your prior action, or moving on if necessary to the calling of a special election. So with that, I might stop and see if there are any questions. It is a process, a step-by-step process, that obviously depends on where the commission would like to go with the matter.
So to be clear, people who claim they signed the petition because they thought it should have been up for a public vote, that was never an option for them in the first place? Is that what you were saying?
Well, I wanted to make clear what part of that comment was that I had read and heard comments suggesting that the governing body could have, should have, whatever, advanced the matter to referendum at the time that you acted initially.
Right.
And I thought it might be informative for anyone observing the process to understand the distinction that at that time, that was not an option for you.
Right.
As a matter of state law. As we advance into this process, we've discussed what is available to you today, and there's any number of scenarios one might discuss, but it might be noteworthy at this point, or at some point in your deliberations today, to discuss the fact that depending upon the action taken, it also raises a process whereby, in order to change any consequence of your actions today, or ultimately the referendum, for a 10-year period, changes cannot be made to whatever action is taken, either by you or by the electorate, without it going back to the electorate. So it's a kind of a three-phase process that, where the rules are simply different at each phase of the process, as a matter of state law.
Sure. So we could theoretically, we pass this, it could go to a vote, we'll say that the vote comes out, in any, whatever way it comes out, that the ordinance is then repealed, if that were the case, someone could just as equally, should things change, whatever the case may be, get another petition out there, put it to another vote, put it back into place, and this could continue ad nauseam, depending on public sentiment?
Well, there's any number of scenarios that one could anticipate, I suppose, whether it be by action of this governing body, or a subsequent governing body, or by the electorate through the petition process.
Okay, okay.
It might be noteworthy here to mention, and if I'm getting into more detail at this stage than you wish, please tell me, but one thing that might be helpful, the key is this matter of the, of the ordinance that is advanced by the petition, and that is to repeal the prior action. That is the action that is protected, if you will, if it prevails, whether by your action or by the electorate, it's that action that can't be changed for that 10-year period without going back to the electorate. On the other hand, if it would not prevail, either by vote today, or by vote of the electorate, it does not give the current ordinance, your prior amendment, any elevated protection.
Right.
It is only if either you or the electorate approve the ordinance put forth by the petition.
So it seems like this has happened before, I can't remember on what issue, but where the wording on the ballot ends up kind of confusing, where a yes vote really means no, we don't want it, and a no vote means yes, we want the amendment.
That's correct, Commissioner. It's the exact phenomenon we had with the smoking ordinance.
That's what it is.
When the, and as I mentioned in the blue sheet, the initiative and referendum process normally anticipates that what is being petitioned and put forward is a policy position articulated in a, in an ordinance, a substantive ordinance. Now certainly, we've had two situations where that process was utilized in an effort to repeal an action previously taken, and that's certainly a legitimate exercise of that, of that statutory right. It does kind of put things, turn things on their head in terms of the language, and having to think through the consequence of the actions.
I don't suppose there's any way to say that that's more clearer than lawyers speak. I think I've got you, but I just.
A yes vote is a yes to a no.
Commissioner Angel's question's fine.
Yeah, I think I'm all right.
Two lawyers get to talk, and I tell you.
Yeah, I think, I think probably the important thing to note is, once, once the petition questioned, a request was made of the county election officer, that went to county attorney for the clarification of the question to be placed on that petition, and then that de facto question becomes the vote. So twofold on that statement is, one, we don't craft a statement that ends up on the ballot, and two, it has to be in harmony with the petition that was written, so both of those things are out of our hand. We hope that if somebody intends to do a certain action, we understand beforehand, yes or no actually does the action that they want to do.
There is really no other way to state the question than, at least as it was posed, than the fact that it is to repeal your prior action.
Right.
So a vote in favor of that, whether it be here or in the ballot box, enacts the repealer, which reverses the prior action.
Okay.
So are we today, are we, do we have to do, do we have to look at both ordinances? Five, five and five, six?
Well, you have to look at both, but if you enact, if you adopt the first, then the second is academic. You do not move on to the second. If you do not enact the first, then you are compelled by state law to enact the second.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We just want to make sure that, just like we're urging the voters when they go vote, it's the matter of the commission today is clear, and options are known. Any other questions of Mr. Binkston? We could certainly come back with more if there are down the road. So at this point in time, I would like to describe a protocol that we're going to follow for the rest of this issue. We have in front of us the first issue, which is a petition request to repeal the prior action taken by the city commission. So we will accept public comment on the nature of the petition. I know that might be a little bit confusing, but we had a lot of public comment phases before where we talked about whether this was or was not a religious, or a civil rights, or, so those things have been amply commented in that, and we just want to give the opportunity today for public comment to be made towards the matter of the petition. The clerk does have a timer. We do ask that those that come forward to address the commission, one, state your name and your address, and the clerk will start the time, and if it boops, then I will politely let you know that you have reached your time limit. And then two, keeping in tune with what we've always done, we don't want there to be repetitive similar comments, so if somebody's made the point that you really wanted to make, I'm sorry, they kind of took the limelight, but please don't reiterate comments that somebody else made. So to that, I open it up for public comment on the item of ordinance number 12-10,655, which is the ordinance to repeal. If you'd like to make comment, please come forward, state your name, and your address. Okay, seeing none, I bring the issue back to the commission for any discussion and action. I'll make a motion on ordinance number 12-10,655, which is the petition in front of us, that we uphold the petition which would repeal our prior action.
Second.
A motion is second to approve ordinance number 12-10,655 on first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Motion is defeated, three to two. Now we advance on to ordinance number 12-10,656, which is, Mr. Binkston clarified, is the de facto action in front of us as a result of not advancing a approved ordinance number 12-10,655.
By default, this already happens, though, already, but this can speed our process along?
Well, the statute provides that you must call the special election. So as I say, it becomes almost a ministerial act, in other words, you're compelled by state law to do so. It is an act that you must take as a matter of state law.
Sure. On that note, then I'll move to adopt the ordinance number 12-10656, calling a special election submitting to the vote of the electors of the city of Salina, Kansas, in accordance with the Initiative and Referendum statute, KSA 12-3013, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 12-10639, which amended chapter 13 of the Sina Code by adding sexual orientation and gender identity as a class is protected from discrimination.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 12-10,656 on first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries five zero. And this would be the point in time where we would, again, if somebody is so inclined to make a motion that a compelling public reason exists in order to approve it on second reading and advance it for vote.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I might elaborate briefly in consultation with Don Merriman and his role as election officer. They, of course, are involved with preparation of ballot, as well as the armed services voting and advance voting, and he concurred or advised us that it would certainly be helpful for them if a second reading could occur today as opposed to a week from now.
So we would need to act on the compelling reason first, and then a second reading after that.
Mayor, I move that the commission determine that a compelling public interest exists, assuring preparation of ballot and inclusion in military and advance voting, to consider the ordinance on second reading today.
Second.
Motion in a second on a compelling reason existing in order to reach military and advance balloting on this issue, all those in favor?
Can we make a comment at this point?
Yes, please.
I just have a comment to make. I think regardless of how the majority of we commissioners voted on this issue, I think it's a disservice to the citizens who sat out in the heat and humidity and gathered names on petitions. It would be a disservice for us not to go to a public vote, even though we have to by default, I understand that. I just wanted to say that. There's been a lot said about, we've received lots of emails, I know everybody has, I have too, and I just want to say that I think that in trying to be fair as a commissioner, that people who worked on this petition and getting it out really worked hard, and it was hot, and it was very humid, and I appreciate their time and effort, even though I don't agree with their decision. It's my hope also, and I can say this as a military wife, I would hope that all of you will remember when you go to the ballot box, that there are many, many gay men and women in Afghanistan and Iraq who are being blown up by roadside bombs, just the same as the straight men and women who are over there. And just when they come back to Salina, I would hope that they would not be discriminated against in jobs and housing, which is what the ordinance was put forth for.
And public accommodations.
And public accommodations, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 12-10656 on second reading. Second.
Motion in a second to approve ordinance number 12-10,656 on second reading, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And at this point in time, we have item 8.4, a request for an executive session.
Mayor, I move at this time we move into executive session.
For second, for 20 minutes to discuss illegal council matters.
Sorry, I gotta have it myself.
Yeah, you did.
I was ready to get out of here.
Council matter subject to attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city interest in the matters and reconvene at 5:10.
Second.
A motion in a second to move into executive session for legal reasons, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're now in the executive session, we'll return at 5:10, do we expect any action?
We're doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot you had to.
Slow down, man.